Six o'clock, call the May tenth, twenty twenty-one meeting to order. Ask clerk take role.
Walters?
Here.
DeVore?
Here.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Anderson?
Here.
Sarchet?
Here.
First item in the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections. I take your motion.
We'll move.
Second.
Roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Motion carries next item, presentation by Justin Vogel and Chris Christensen, board members of the Iowa Foundation for Parks and Recreation. What was yours?
Yeah, I sure will. Good evening, Mayor, Council, uh, City Manager. So, we've got these folks here tonight. Um, so, uh, Iowa Foundation for Parks and Recreation, uh, it's a nonprofit, it's an advocate for parks and rec in this state. Their mission is to just make sure everybody can benefit parks and recreation. A few of the things that they do consistently year to year, they have a mini grant, uh, that's meant for towns under a population of ten thousand. Um, I applied for that this past year or two by just programming equipment since we're starting from scratch here in town. And I was lucky enough to be awarded that. The other one that they did, uh, very special, uh, again for communities under ten thousand, um, the derecho damage, uh, as well. So, I submitted kind of what we experienced here in Polk City and we were lucky enough to also be a recipient of the derecho damage as well. So, so. I couldn't have said that any better myself. So, I'm just gonna shut up right here. So, anyway, we're glad to present you with a thousand dollars for your, uh, yeah, but we hope we get some pictures.
Are you guys actually smiling?
Yeah, that's the hard part.
You see your eyes.
You want to take one, couple?
Sir? You are photobombing.
Alright, good. And so, we're pleased to present, Justin, I'm pleased to present another check for twenty-five hundred dollars for trees for the ratio. So, we hope you.
Thank you.
Yep, you're very welcome.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you very much.
Y'all did the best, so I knew that somewhere there was an inside job here and I didn't associate. I'm not saying anything. I'm not on the selection panel, so I'm kidding you all. Yeah, there's checks.
You've got bigger problems showing up with them.
I know, that's what I thought too. I was worried about that if my reputation was gonna be attacked by leaving.
What's that? You can have.
Yeah, those are for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you very much. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Well, while we're on the topic, can we?
Okay, so I, I just wanna, uh, commend Jason a little bit, um, for this kinda stuff and his work on, you know, we've talked a number of times, timing couldn't have been worse for, uh, his job with COVID and everything and, and taking some lumps, but, uh, particularly the, the trees thing reminded me, you know, things like joining the Arbor League that I don't think we're in, I know weren't in, uh, job description that you've done, uh, to go above and beyond, just kinda demonstrate your passion for, uh, broadly speaking, uh, things that affect parks. So, um, great job again and, uh, appreciate.
In a piggyback, we've talked about grants and for, for a very, very, very long time and we haven't been, we had not been very good at, I know we're on Sprite, thinking the same thing. And the fact that you applied for them is a step in, I know Chelsea does as well. I mean, that's something we have just, we've really lost focus on way down the road, uh, until a couple years ago. So, thanks for doing that. This is all just wonderful to get this kinda place. So, it's really good stuff. Thank you. Moving on to a couple of public hearings, it's time to close the regular meeting and open public hearing for proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendment. Ask clerk when the notice was published.
April twenty-third.
Any written comments for or against?
No, sir.
Chelsea, she can report.
We are proposing a second budget amendment for the current fiscal year twenty, fiscal year twenty-one. Um, the amendment includes amending for three hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars in revenue and two million, four hundred, five thousand and one hundred and seventy-six dollars in expenditures. A large, uh, portion of the expenditures is attributed to the Des Moines Water Works, uh, Booster and feeder main station project. And that project accounts for one point six million of the amended expenditures. Is there anyone on the phone who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed budget amendment?
Hearing none, seeing none, they need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
I move.
Okay.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVore?
Motion carries next item, resolution twenty twenty-one thirty-five approving fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendment. Motion please.
So, a second.
Questions, conversation?
Yeah, in kind of a similar vein, I, I think there are some relatively uncontrollable pieces to this and there are some controllable ones. For the controllable ones, I, I think that, uh, you know, budget amendments are a big deal and, and we need to stick to, uh, our, the budget that we set out and take that very seriously and, and make amendments or adjustments when and only if we, we come across things. I would think that, that, you know, the COVID, uh, regulations and, and the derecho, uh, uh, and, and, you know, again, say whatever you want about the, the CARES Acts and, uh, the, the federal response, state response, but, uh, I do really appreciate, uh, Chelsea's leadership and, and sort of taking an assertive approach to making sure that we weren't, uh, impacted any more than we're, but also wanna cite you guys. I know spending phrases, that's really exciting for you guys to hear when, when that comes out and, I mean, it does make your job tough and, uh, recognize that and appreciate, uh, understanding why and, you know, I didn't hear any grumbling. I think grumbling would have been natural for things that you had gotten approval for and, um, were ready to act on. But, um, again, just appreciate the leadership and, and coming out of this in the position that we are, um, I think is a strong testament to, uh, our financial position, you know, editorializing a little bit. Again, there's, the big ticket items are not necessarily in that vein, but I kind of am in that. Controllable is probably not the word, but less, you know, our own discretion, our own, um, perspective kind of drives some of those. So, just wanted to add that context.
Roll call please.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Time to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing on the proposed vacation drain easement on lots eleven and twelve, Arrow Ridge Point, plat number two. Ask clerk when the notice was published.
April thirtieth.
Any written comments for or against?
No, sir.
This time I'd like staff to provide a report. One of you.
Yeah, I guess I can do that. Uh, yeah, this is a, um, we had the opportunity when the property owners at, uh, is it eighteen sixteen West La Conza, uh, came in and they were interested in doing a plat of surveys to essentially reestablish what their boundary line was between the two properties. Um, and when they did that, we, we had to bring in lot tie agreements, but it also gave us the opportunity to look at an existing drainage easement. Then, that we were familiar with, uh, on the back of those lots and the drainage easement did not follow the natural drainage channel. It's actually a little bit closer to the house and, and not centered on the channel. So, we asked, uh, the property owner to provide a new easement, which they will be doing. Uh, we recommend that that new easement gets approved, you know, kind of at the same time. So, that'll, the one that, that'll be the next item on that's on the agenda. That'll take the place of it. Uh, the other thing is that easement then would be on the city's new forms, which clearly says the property owner is responsible for the maintenance of the embankments. So, all in all, it's, it clarifies it and it puts it in the right location, three, you know, allows the, uh, property owner's backyard to be a little bit more in their own control too. So, we recommend a, a both of them. They did do the calculations and everything to verify that the new easement's in the right location and the right size.
So, you mentioned being familiar with this. I mean, a couple of years ago, this neighborhood, it came for some corrosion issues. This is the exact same thing, right?
It's, it's come up.
Few times, maybe even before me, I don't know.
Yeah, going back to maybe nineteen ninety.
Okay, yeah.
One of the other names I recognize, but the other name I don't remember.
Yeah, and I guess, again, given that time, I know property owners are gonna change hands, but so, this easement change will allow them to better fix the problem.
Well, I mean, they had the right to fix the problem before. It just, the easement as it was, was, was closer to the house than it needed to be. Um, so, it just doesn't encumber as much of their backyard. But it, it, and it puts it in the, you know, it just puts it where, instead of a drainage here in the back there, you know, and the actual ditch is on the other side, it actually just puts it where it's supposed to be. And it better defines that that's where we don't wanna have drainage obstructions.
Okay, okay. Doing hard and making, not that this necessarily pertains to what we're doing here, but are they making progress on the issues that?
I don't know.
Which again, I know is not our responsibility nor what we're doing here.
Is there anyone on the phone who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed vacation drain easement? Hearing none, seeing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
Some move?
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries, I need a motion, first reading ordinance twenty twenty-one fourteen hundred vacating drainage easement.
We'll move.
Second. Questions? Roll call please.
DeVore?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVore? Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries as an optional adder here, optional waving of second and third reading. You seen, not two? No.
Perfect. Can I get a motion, please?
We'll move.
Okay.
Vogel?
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVore?
Motion carries next item, resolution twenty twenty-one thirty-six approving rock, the record of lot tie agreements acceptance, acceptance of thirty-foot surface water flowage easement and plat of survey for parcels twenty twenty-one dash five and twenty twenty-one dash six. Get a motion please.
Some move?
Can I get a motion, please?
We'll move.
Okay.
Vogel?
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVore?
Motion carries next item, resolution twenty twenty-one thirty-six approving rock, the record of lot tie agreements acceptance, acceptance of thirty-foot surface water flowage easement and plat of survey for parcels twenty twenty-one dash five and twenty twenty-one dash six. Get a motion please.
Some move?
Second. Roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Motion carries, public comments, it's the time and place for comments for any item other than those in a public hearing. Ask city clerk if anybody's name.
No, sir.
Perfect, moving on, consent agenda, I need a motion, please.
Some move?
Second. Questions?
I don't question, I do wanna make a comment to E and this is another sort of fuzzy recommendation, Chelsea, you can do with as you wish, but I've gotten questions on our progression towards, I know we're doing in the fall and I know it's too early 'cause we don't know a lot of things, but, um, if there is something that you think makes sense, um, given the grants that we already have gotten, our, our plans, I don't necessarily wanna, you know, get people's hopes up, but, uh, I know there's a lot of interests just with, um, the soil quality, you know, um, talked about this. Really ecstatic that, that we're directionally where we are in preparation for something in the fall. Um, and if there's a, a chance to communicate that on the website, social media, whatever, with the caveat, so it's not done, that we, you know, we're working on it, uh, just because, yeah, so.
We put, we'll put that timeline out there.
Yeah, and it maybe is.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Roll call please.
DeVore?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yeah.
Motion carries next item, resolution twenty twenty-one thirty-nine approving payout number two for twenty twenty-one street repairs project amount of sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred fourteen dollars and twenty cents.
Okay.
Questions? Roll call please.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVore?
Motion carries next item, third reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one thirteen hundred rezoning seventy-seven point six-six acres of nat properties located north and east of two twenty East Vista Lake Avenue from A one to R one, from A one to R one A and from R one, R A.
We'll move.
Second. Roll call.
DeVore?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Sarchet?
No, and since we didn't have comments on there, just to add the same reason, in case anybody's not listening to the two meetings ago, I don't think we had time for comments last time either, but, uh, I'm concerned about the density, I'm concerned about, um, somebody with subsequent development over there. Just to explain.
Motion carries. Next item, I'm sorry, what, what is this?
I need to know Walters' vote.
Oh, sorry, I thought that he voted.
Yeah.
Couldn't hear behind the mask.
While we're still talking about this, I've, I've had some comments from some of the people on Madison about the elevations back there and how they're afraid everything's gonna drain onto their yards and I hope that that is being monitored and being looked at.
Next item reports in particulars, mayor proclamation, first, um, proclamation is National Emergency Medical Services Week from May sixteenth to the twenty-second. I would like to recognize that this event would be May sixteenth through the twenty-sixth, I'm sorry, through the twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Get a copy of that. The next one pains me. And I suppose, May sixteenth through the twenty-second should also be National Public Works Week. And so, therefore, we designate the week of May sixteenth through the twenty-first as National Public Works.
Notice will be accepted, Mayor.
That goes without saying. Anybody have anything else for the good of the cause?
Yes, Mayor, I do. Um, I wish I would have found out sooner, but last Friday, I found out we were also gonna be the recipients of the Mid-American Energy CARES. That is their corporate citizenship, citizenship program for folks that are in their service area. Uh, their CARES goes to enhance community, community, urban culture, environmental respect, education and safety. Uh, they are giving us, uh, ten thousand dollars to go towards Lost Lake Park Phase Two. So, thank you, Mid-American Energy.
Thanks for doing that too. Put our hand in the hat. Anybody else? Anybody up here have anything else?
I have a question. I, I haven't, I haven't been contacted personally, but I've heard that the concession stand is not open. Is that because of, uh, COVID or is it open or?
It is now. It wasn't, right?
Oh, do you mean actual concessions concessions or the restrooms?
Concessions.
Concessions? No, so the concessions are ran by the groups individually, uh, and if they're not open at the moment, I can only assume that the groups decided against it.
They were last weekend, I know.
They were open?
Yeah.
Okay, when, when who, who's the group?
That would be Little League and Soccer, whichever one is doing concessions at that time. I'm not sure how they work together to decide who gets what.
It used to be Little League slash softball, spring and soccer and fall.
Mm-hmm.
And I, the only reason I know is because I heard they ran out of the hot cocoa.
Okay, well, I, I was just curious.
There was a restroom issue out there though.
Yeah.
I know three or four years ago, after we, that was brand new, before I could even get out of my truck at a game out there, I had two calls about the concession stand and restrooms not being open and you spend a quarter of a million dollars on it, that's sitting idle. I just didn't wanna repeat it up.
There was a restroom issue out there and that's, that was closed for a period of time, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and it's open in six months.
Some electrical problems out there with both.
Well, are, are we looking into that at all and find out why the groups aren't doing it? Do we know?
Um, I've spoken with Little League a little bit about it. It comes down to a licensing, um, uh, an issue with the licensing. They didn't wanna do, do it the way they've done it in the past. So, I think they're looking at different ways and different licenses that could, they could use where they're not subject to so much protocol.
Uh-huh. Well, is, is that something they've always done on our own or is that something we've helped them with or should be helping them with?
No, um, I had a conversation with some health inspectors and typically when you have a shared use facility like that, individual user groups, it's best practice that they hold the license as the ones that are doing the, the food prep and handling.
Okay. Does anybody else have a concern with that?
I'm not sure if in the past there was licensing issues, 'cause I'm not sure kind of what the process was. Without, uh, I don't know if there was, if it was, there was a process for, so maybe this is the process. And that's what's, I don't, I don't know. So, I think that's something that probably Jason needs to take back and.
I, I, quite a few years ago, I, I personally know how it worked, 'cause my daughter and son-in-law did it for three years and they quit because of lack of volunteers and they were working every night for free. And I think maybe that possibly we should give some help in that. So, you know, they had to, they had to go town, downtown themselves and file for the license and take time off work to be out there when the inspector came during regular working hours and if I remember correctly. And I think that's an awful lot to ask for, of volunteers. That's just my opinion.
So, I, I agree with that. I, I struggle to, you know, what's different this year that's, that, you know, has worked in the past. But I know that the volunteer, like, I, I've been on that side of it too. It's, it's always been a, and I've never, I've always wondered, is it, you know, is it worth it to, to make whatever they make, given the effort that they have? I mean, it's enough to get coaches and referees and, and all this stuff and then, you know, I don't know how lucrative concession stands are, if they're, if they can justify it that way.
There again, it depends on who's running it and how it works and what they're, I just, I think what's different now is we didn't have play, a paid employee in the past and we, we had to totally rely on volunteers and we don't do that anymore.
How about we'll follow up with you on the comment about why they weren't open last week, but I think we'd be willing to have the conversation next year to, to look into it. Um, I'm not gonna make any commitments for us to staff it at this point in time, but we'd have that conversation openly.
Yeah, uh, and I'm not saying we should staff it, but I think that something should be happening out there. I know, I'd, I'd hate to go to a ballgame and find out I couldn't get a bag of popcorn.
Sure. We'll follow up on why it wasn't staffed or open last week for you, Ron.
Thank you.
I mean, I, supporting these groups is one of the, you know, not financially, but one of the more critical things we do. And, and I don't know that Jason's position changes to your point, staffing, if there's a model that works better that, that, you know, eases some of the red tape. I mean, there's gotta be similar groups that don't need to go through the health inspect. I mean, I know just from the festival, first year, we had a guy come out, we had to change a bunch of stuff and then changed how those food vendors were filed and you had to do less. Obviously, want food to be safe and those things. But, you know, if, if they have popcorn and candy bars is different than a restaurant cooking chicken and fish, right? So, if there's a streamlined way, I, I think Jason's position lends itself to helping with best practices. I still wonder, you know, if you're making, if the margin on a candy bar is a quarter and you already have a volunteer issue, is there a different model that, that, so I think that it's a two-way street if, if, uh, if those groups want Jason, and, and I, I don't mean this to single you out, but if our parks and rec staff positions recommendation, they need to be open to those suggestions and not pick and choose, you know, when they take certain advice. Yeah, so, I, you know, I, I think it's tough to, to say, you know, Jason, you've been in the job for, we're paying your salary, fix all the problems that have been existing for twenty years. And I know that's not what you're saying, um, but I just wanna be careful with not making him to be the bad guy, say, well.
Well, no, and that wasn't my intention at all.
I know, but I think that somehow, that, that is how it can be heard with some of the groups. We've done things a certain way and, and I think, you know, we wanna be respectful of that. If they wanna continue with the model that they've done and more hands off, if you wanna get more hands on, then, you know, it's, it's a two-way dial.
Well, I, I just think it's part of our role as, as a council to make sure that these things do run smoothly. And if they're not running smoothly, I think we need to, and I think, Chelsea, your idea is very good, to find out why and get to the bottom of it. I don't know if, if it's, if it's nobody wants to do it. I, you know, in Little League and soccer, not so much, 'cause they go clear up to eighteen, don't they? Little League, your kid gets twelve, you're probably not gonna wanna be down there any, every weekend anymore, 'cause you're done with Little League. Or soccer continues on, so.
And I get from their perspective, if you're, you know, you're lining up coaches at all those levels, you're, you're lining up practice times, you're lining up game times, you're lining up referees, the last thing you wanna be worried about is, is the concession stand. Although, to your earlier point, that's gonna be one of the first things they probably hear about if it's not open. I just, I, I, it, I think Jason is in a almost impossible position. And I'll use another analogy with scheduling that, that I am concerned about. I know there's a couple posts out there, maybe we're getting a little bit off topic, but I think it does relate where it's, at, at ten AM until eleven, the, the parking capacity is about a hundred and twenty percent. At noon, it's like, I'm, I'm making this up, at noon, it's like fifty percent and at two, it's zero. So, everybody wants to play those mid-morning Saturday games, but, and, and, and we have, we heard a comment, uh, in the, well, the P and Z heard a comment when I watched the meeting about the safety concern, which is a hundred percent legitimate. And God forbid, if anything seriously happens, but that's a problem that scheduling can solve for. I know there are limitations to certain things, but, you know, that's, I've got one daughter that's, for the first time, has played a team out of town. So, I don't wanna, I'm, I'm not inclined to listen to somebody say that the schedule's determined by a Central Iowa group when she's playing nothing but other North Polk teams. And so, again, I, and I'm, I'm hypocritical here, right? I'd much rather have the nine, well, when it's not raining, I'd much rather have the nine AM Saturday game than a two o'clock Saturday. But I don't want that at the expense of, you know, an accident and, and that's, the, I don't wanna make Jason the hatchet man for that argument, right? I mean, us telling any one of those groups, the league softball, soccer, when they can schedule games, is gonna be met with pitchforks and, and, you know, flaming arrows. And, and I don't think that's fair to Jason to, to, to put him in that position. So, which one of these issues do you, do you pick at? I kind of stumbled in some, in some ways, yeah.
And I think the problem with why everybody wants to play in the morning has nothing to do with weather or anything else. I think most of them play in travel ball in the afternoon. Soccer or softball or whatever in there.
Well, and I will, uh, grab that tangent and then go off on another one, but, uh, no, I was, my daughter played ten AM this Saturday, or you, or ten fifteen, we're usually nine o'clock. And there was literally nowhere to park from about ten till ten, until ten oh two. And then there was like twenty spaces, you know, so it's that transition period and again, maybe scheduling, you could have more time between games. But again, concession stand, game schedules, all of these come back to the fact that our facilities currently are only being used by, you know, groups that are not city groups. They, they're what we've had for years, they've operated like that for years. We're transitioning into having a Parks and Rec director and it's still, all these things are figuring out how we fit together and work together to make the best for, for everybody involved. So, I think, speaking to the scheduling, the parking, the concession stand, all of those things, um, we're definitely gonna go through some transition over these next few years and I think there'll be trial error efforts, I know, but I'm, I'm confident that in all of these arenas, we'll, we'll get to the right spot. It'll just, just take a little time.
Well, and having, having been involved in this stuff for years and years, since about nineteen seventy-three, I think, it's, it's just numbers. When we had three Little League teams, wasn't a problem. When we had four soccer teams, it wasn't a problem. When we had three Little League teams, wasn't a problem. When we had four soccer teams, it wasn't a problem, but now those numbers have grown. And, and everybody wants their part. And I'm not saying right or wrong or what it is. Or do, or do I have a solution? But I think that there's people in this room and they're smart enough to configure, configure this out. And I think that's what needs to happen. Me not being the one.
Do you have more?
Uh, yeah, no, I was just going to reiterate some of the conversations. I mean, if you look at our consent agenda, you look at how we started off. You know, I just want to reiterate the thanks to staff for applying for grants out there. You know, we have, in this community, we have so many needs. We have so many opportunities for amenities, you know, a lot of the things we talk about here. And finding out these outside sources are there, it's the effort to go after this money that is not solely from our taxpayers. So that's going to make a huge difference in what we can achieve over the next several years. So we can't thank you guys enough for all the effort that you're putting forward to apply for those grants.
Now, you have anything else?
I have one thing.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I meant to touch on this a little bit earlier, but I just wanted to reiterate that the CARES money that the city did receive back in November for almost 118,000, I had put it in my memo and I had also let the council know last week, but that money is going to be debited amongst the departments. And as Rob alluded earlier, and I'm sorry to say anything during the budget amendment, um, it was a tough year at the end of the last budget year with COVID. And, um, we can just be appreciative that that's how we're going to spend that money and the departments can get a little bit caught up. So I just want to tell the council, thank you for acknowledging that.
Perfect. Anything else?
So, you know, just before this meeting got the, the agenda for the Metro Advisory Council meeting tomorrow. And, um, so the state is winding down their session. I think they're past their, whatever they call it, where they don't get a per diem anymore, which usually is when they wrap things up. But the one issue that they're still debating, it sounds like is property taxes. And again, I always find it interesting that an entity that doesn't collect property taxes gets to decide how we get property taxes, but that's a whole other thing. There's a, a couple of proposals that would once again kind of jack with our funding a little bit. So, um, I think that the Senate has a version, the House has a version. Who knows, but I'm anxious to kind of hear where that's at. It does sound like there's some income tax relief, uh, coming, which is positive hopefully. But, um, curious to see what they have to say on property taxes. So nothing final, but. And I do, I should acknowledge that, that, I think it's, you know, so there's a, a councilman in Johnston who's, who's done it. Is also a, works down at the State House and does a really good job of funneling through some of the things where historically illegal cities. And I, and I think they do a pretty good job. I think they skewed a little bit more towards some of the larger communities. So, um, we really appreciate that MAC group's flexibility in using some existing resources. Broaden the voice, so to speak, on, on, uh, getting some updates on property taxes.
Anything else? Now that I take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Call a favor?
All right.